Dana will start with the public hearing, special use permit and site plan review for Piva Borrego Solar on Williams Road.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Lewiston Town Board in Niagara County, New York on the ninth day of September 2019 commencing at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall, 1375 Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York to hear and consider the following property and property owner applicant. Owner applicant is Richard and Adrian Piva Borrego Solar. Property location is 4352 Williams Road, Ransomeville, New York, tax pay number 75.00-1-25, Niagara County, New York. To consider application for a special use permit and site plan review for a ground-mounted utility-grade solar energy system on said premises. All interested parties will be heard by the Town of Lewiston Town Board at set public hearing. A full copy of the application is available for review at the Town of Lewiston Building Inspector's Office during normal business hours, dated August 26, 2019.
Thank you very much. I have two, it looks like two people signed up. I'll start with Steve Long.
Yep.
Okay. Do you want to speak on the project?
I signed in so that I could speak, but I would, Mark, I would, Borrego, when I hear from Lindsey McIntyre, Borrego, and Mark Kenworth.
Okay.
For Erden Anthony.
So make sure to step up.
Yep.
And Mike can speak down.
So my name is Steve Long from Borrego Solar, and I signed this all in just in case we had to speak. Lindsey McIntyre from Borrego is here also. And Mark Kenworth from Erden Anthony is our civil engineer on this project, and he's going to do a presentation of the overall project, and we're here to answer questions.
As an engineer, would you check to see if that mic is on?
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have to speak up a little bit.
Okay. So nobody else, would you like to speak in regards to the Borrego Solar?
No, I'd like to speak at some point, but I was trying to make sure that I'm on the list to speak at the end or at any point in time.
The beginning is when we do this, so what, or at the end is the...
Yeah, they told me at the end of this one and beginning of the end of the regular board meeting.
Okay. So in regards to this, this is for the public hearing, special use permit and site plan review for the solar farm, Williams Road. Is anybody here to speak in regards to the solar farm?
I would, I'd be happy to give a brief overview.
Sure.
If you would like. I'm not going to use the microphone because I don't think it's on.
Can you plug it up here? Can you hear, can you hear the background?
I'll yell.
Okay.
Because I want to use the words here.
Okay.
And I'll direct, try to direct my tenants both to the audience and to the board. The proposed project will construct and operate a 7.2 megawatt DC, four megawatt AC, ground-mounted community solar energy system at 4352 Williams Road here in the Town of Lewiston. The site is located on the west side of the road, approximately 2,250 feet north of Swan Road, and has historically been used as actively tilled firm land. What I'm holding here is a map of the overall project site. It encompasses approximately 97.65 acres of land, that's the total project site. The subject parcel has 1,100 feet of frontage on Williams Road and is 3,980 feet deep. The project that will be developed essentially encompasses approximately 28.4 acres of the eastern portion nearest Williams Road. This includes 17.62 acres within the fenced solar array, 1.93 acres of the access driveway from Williams Road, and 4.95 acres of tree clearing along the outside of the site, of the solar site itself. They said this is basically an overview of the entire project site. We are in this front portion towards the front here. We're not out at the road, but we're back several hundred feet primarily in this first two farm fields. This area, this map here is a more detailed map of the development itself on those front two farm fields. Access to the array will be by way of a 20-foot wide crushed stone surface driveway off Williams Road that's along here. And holes in aerial electrical wires needed for the interconnection with national grid extends 200 feet into the site from Williams Road along this access driveway down in here. The tree clearing I spoke of is in this area to the south of the arrays themselves. The tree clearing is very scary so that the arrays are not shaded by the sun. It's just tree, most of that is just tree clearing. There's only a narrow strip of tree clearing and strip removal along the access road here to have a bit of a clear mowable buffer between the tree clearing and the driveway itself. Utility scale projects such as this one are allowed and regulated under the Town of Lewiston's zoning code, chapter 360, article 28, solar energy systems. Utility scale solar like this would be proposed are allowed in rural residential districts as well as industrial zoning districts. This proposed project is in a rural residential zoning district. The proposed site layout has been designed and laid out in accordance with the Town of Lewiston's Solar Energy Code, section 360-220, special use permit criteria for a utility scale solar energy system. These requirements include a minimum lot size of five acres and a maximum lot area of 100. As I mentioned moments ago, this project is at a 97.65 acre lot. The required minimum front setback is 200 feet and the proposed Williams Road front setback is 536 feet. The required minimum side setback is 100 feet and the proposed minimum side setback is 108 feet. The required minimum rear setback is 100 feet and this proposed rear setback 1,828 The minimum required setbacks to existing dwellings are as follows. 250 feet to any existing dwelling on the subject parcel. The distance to the landowner's residence is 472 feet. And the setback to any existing dwelling on adjoining property has to be at least 500 feet. And the distance to the nearest dwelling on adjoining lot is 508 feet. The maximum allowed height is 20 feet from grade level and the site, on this site, the maximum height is 9 feet. Other town code requirements include a decommissioning plan which has been submitted. The construction of the facility is environmentally friendly. Only minor amounts of excavation and grading work is required. Some tree clearing and limited stump grubbing or removal is required. Some minor limited site regrading is proposed in the area of the two equipment paths and for three culvert drain-to-ditch crossings. Upon completion, the site area within the fence will be planted to a metal grass and the remainder of the site west of the proposed solar array could still remain in an agricultural use. During construction, the project will generate approximately 50 vehicle trips per day. That's 25 arriving and 25 exiting, and this includes construction-related deliveries and employees. Once the project is in operation, it will generate no discernible noise to neighboring receptors, no adverse glare, and no traffic. There is also no nighttime sight lighting proposed. Maintenance activity is limited to mowing up to two times per year and an occasional visit by electrical service technicians. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a question?
Can you absolutely, Ken?
I have one question for you. Your service road going in, where, where is it?
It follows existing laneway that's there now, the unobstructed, 200-foot laneway.
Okay. I'll start from the ditch. As I spoke with your project, I spoke with your project manager, and he was going to move in Garbrell.
I think you're referring to the Swan Run project because our project manager isn't on this thing now. We don't have approval. Yeah. That's the Swan Run project.
Mr. Jacoby has another question for you.
Can you read through that? Certainly, I misinterpreted it, but is there any battery storage involved in this?
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever?
No.
I got a question on the, the fire access road will be able to support 75,000 pounds load. This is from the fire inspector, and the road will be maintained throughout the project's lifespan. What is the road? Is it going to be blacktopped or is it...
No, it's going to be surfaced with a very coarse, monie crushed stone, kind of like railroad ballast. And they have to use that coarse crushed stone in order to have it count as pervious gravel surface. Now, the thickness of that road will be dependent upon the results of the geotechnical investigation that will follow on after this process is finished and before a building permit is pulled. Steve, do you want to speak to that a little more?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do a geotechnical testing out there, and I'll request for them to give us the recommendation for a road thickness that will support that way. And that detail will be in the construction drawings for the building.
Who would maintain it though, if it's a 25-year lifespan?
The owner of the system. It'll be maintained, they'll come in twice a year, and if any maintenance is required, it's not going to get used much.
No.
So they'll be maintaining it.
Is there a turnaround at the end?
There's a T turnaround, yes.
The very west end down there, you'll see this turnaround, there's actually a little pull-up turnaround each perfectly.
If I understand correctly, there'll be vegetation lined on the north side of the project all the way?
Pretty much existing vegetation, yeah.
But it will be maintained for the life of the project?
It'll be allowed to continue to grow. The only area that will be mowed is the area between the existing vegetation and the fence line. The area here that's filled, where we planted the metal grass, but there's no vegetation removal, it's always on the, down here in the east end of it or the north side, just limited vegetation along into the woods. Essentially, it's out there.
Wetlands to the south, so there's no potential development there.
Nope.
To the north, there is potential development.
That's the property line to the north.
Yes, property line to the north.
I was under the impression there was going to be a tree lined, put it there all the way.
There's none planned because the existing vegetation is there now. If the, if, if this vegetation were removed to the property line, there's still vegetation on that south side of the property line. It would seem foolish, it would seem somewhat foolish for someone to develop this property and remove all the screening to that.
Well, Mother Nature has a way of doing things to us that we don't always appreciate. Can't we say in there that it would have to be maintained?
Well, here's the problem, I think from looking at the diagram, it's, it's not on their property, it's on the northern property. So if you look, that's the property line, so if this was to be removed, it'd be removed by the owners to the north. It wouldn't be by them. They couldn't remove that property, correct?
They have no intent to remove that existing vegetation.
Right. And some of it, some of it's on there. There's, there's a part there, but most of it, it looks like it's north. So like, like...
I'm trying to anticipate what the future may hold, and that person has the right to develop their property, and this is, this project is on the south side of it, this project should be responsible for the tree line as long as, in the future, if it's necessary.
Well, what, what you're asking though is I don't think we can require people to the north to not touch those trees.
No, so that would be, they've got the right to do what they want, but if they do, if Mother Nature removes all those trees, that leaves that all exposed to future technology.
Okay, so what you're saying is we wouldn't have to do it now, but if something in the 25 years happened or occurred, they'd be responsible for putting something...
The fact that a special use permit is renewable periodically?
Yeah.
If you were to renew it, could you put it as a condition, a unconditional?
I would like that in the record. And am I correct, I understand there's going to be a chain link fence all the way around?
Yes, it is. It's opposed by chain link fence.
Individuals will not have access to it?
Nope.
The animals that get in there are at their own risk. They went under, over.
Yep. It's not uncommon to find a deer or two stuck inside some fence.
It's a seven-foot fence.
Yeah.
That's a good chunk of deer.
But it's not topped by barbed wire, it's not an, that we're trying to take away from this.
And there's no weapon in it, it's an open chain link?
It's an open chain link fence, two-inch mesh.
I noticed that in the packet there was some concern about the previous debris that was left on the property. This project clean up all that property?
Well, we were going to take no action tonight because we want to go through a public hearing, so I, I read it as well, and that's, that's a prerequisite of the planning is, is what, that's what you're referring to.
I was going to ask Bill a question on that. Is there anything that was mentioned at the planning board that we should include as we move forward?
There were a number of conditions that were, that were placed on the project, and they were all written in the letter of the recommendation, so.
I just wondered, what happens from time to time is we let those things slip out, we don't add them to the approval. So as we move forward, we're going to make sure that we do add them.
Right, yeah, we attach that right to them.
We note that Chris isn't here tonight, Chris will help me.
He'll call you.
But it is our understanding that the property owner has worked, been working building the past few months to remove those vehicles and whatever is back there, and the understanding we have right now, and I don't mean to be speaking out of turn, it's kind of hearsay, but we understand that he is going, he's pulled them out, they're under tents right now, but there will be a building permit or issued or soon to be issued for a pole barn to store them in. That's our understanding.
And Chris was out there at the end of August to walk the site, and he gave break to Piva just over, but this is okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Will you propose the public hearing?
Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Dana, the public hearing for the local law amendment, chapter 30, towers.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Lewiston Town Board, Niagara County, New York on the ninth day of September 2018 commencing at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall, 1375 Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York to hear and consider a local law amending chapter 30 of towers to permit the construction of lattice towers. All interested parties will, will be heard by the Town of Lewiston Town Board at set public hearing. A full text of the proposed local law is available for review at the Town of Lewiston Town Board's Office during normal business hours, dated August 26.
Thank you. Nobody signed up, so I'll ask, does anybody have any questions in regards to the local law amendment, chapter 30, for towers? Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Am I correct, Mr. Sheen, we're going to take no action?
Yes, that's correct.
Agenda approval. We need to add executive session. One is going to be for contract negotiations. Second is going to be consultation with our attorney for possible litigation. You had...
There's others. There's a couple other topics that are all fall under the category of consultation with counsel. They're all, they're all consultation.
Possible, possible litigation?
Not necessarily. They're just consultation with counsel. That's, that's the reason for going to executive session on the other topics.
Okay. So ju, just, just so we're clear, there's contract negotiations and there's four matters that fall under consultation with the attorney, correct?
Yes.
Second. Okay. Okay. Great motion then, and another motion? Second. Motion of second, approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Parkhead statements. Dana?
And your last meeting, you approved the Auctions International bids that were received. I received two emails from Auctions International stating that one of the bids for number 0111 communication equipment is, the high bidder has... Yes, the high bid, the high bidder has withdrawn, and the second bidder is offering $310 for the item.
Who was the high, who was the high bid?
The high bid for $380. So the second bidder is offering $310.
Make a motion, wait, second. We have a motion of second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, another item, the backup bidder was contacted, and he is not interested either for number 118 Big Sky Shoot Firearms Racks. And that was a bid that was for $21, and even the second bidder is not interested now. They're asking the town if they want it just to be relisted or what do you want to do with it?
Chief, any input on that?
No, doesn't matter. We, we want it relisted or we can give it away. However, the attorney thinks it'd be best to dispose of the property.
Do they take, do they take it? I mean, whatever you want to do with it.
We have it still.
We have it still?
Yeah, yeah. It's going to be scrapped?
For $21, I wouldn't relist it.
Is it something that could be scrapped?
Possibly.
Someone local might want it as, as it is?
Or another agency.
So I guess we, we can call it excess equipment or...
Suggest we do nothing at this time and just wait and see where the chips fall. Something they wanted, no, but...
Okay, we'll take no action.
So what's to know to relisting though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we, should we load on that to not relist?
You can, yeah, sure.
We have a motion not to list it?
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Okay.
No, my second item, I put the paperwork in front of you. Every year, just about every year, the Town of Lewiston purchases recycling bins. The New York State DEC is offering a matching grant for the purchase of recycling bins. So I've been asked by the grant writer to get the town board's approval that you would be willing to match that before she submits the grant. Last year, or at the beginning of this year, we bought 300 bins for 2787. I mean, we can, we can get up to 600 bins and, for the, for the cost of 300, and we would be set for at least two years, maybe even going to three years, and not have to purchase some from the...
Discussion?
Let's make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion of second, discussion?
We were talking about getting the larger bins. We were talking about modern, being able to move ahead with this. From what I understand is if we do go ahead with the larger bins, people who want the smaller ones can still use the smaller ones, so they won't go to waste.
Right.
So I think we should move ahead, but keep in mind, we like the larger bins for less awful pickup.
The 90% of people.
The larger ones?
The large tops.
Right. We're hoping to find a source for those.
Okay.
We have the money for it?
Yeah.
So we have a motion of second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Dana, we do let the, let the village know about this grant in case they would like to apply to, they have no bins left.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Chief Prevent?
Yes, I spoke with the supervisor, so the board's aware regarding our fingerprint machine. It's electronically transmitted, we transmit all of our arrests, our documents sent to DCJS. We're having a problem with that, it was filed under a grant a number of years ago, and the state kind of mandated that they were going to take electronic fingerprints only and not ink fingerprints. So because our agency was a more active agency, some of the agencies had higher arrest numbers, they provided the equipment. Since then, it's about 10 years old, it's failing now, we've been able to kind of patch work it, I let the supervisor know. It stopped working altogether. I did make arrangements with DCJS to be able to submit our prints in printed form, which they're only going to tolerate for a certain amount of time. It is working right now, so I'm, I'm hoping that we can make it through. We met with Jackie during our budget meeting, and she was made aware of it as well. So possibly, we might need to do something if it fails, just so the board's aware, we need to make a decision to do something possibly before the end of the year. If it makes it to the end of the year, maybe we can look at a budgeting issue. We've pursued grants and are trying to pursue grants, and will still continue to do that. Somebody from DCJS was supposed to get back to us, and I have not heard back from them yet. I also talked to our grant writer and let her know and made her aware so that she could look into something to see if anything's available along those lines.
And what was the, the original price of the 3000? What's the cost of the place?
I think it was around $10,000.
Right, that's it, that's...
That's what it is to replace the, the, when we first got on, on the grant, I don't remember what the, what the, the price was, but to, to bring it up to speed and get it where it's functional is around $10,000.
Steve, could you reach out to our Senate Limited Senators, see if they could possibly use members, bill our members' money to get that, or they could connect the poll line security to see if we could get something through there?
Sure, and I know we have another resource, but that, I think, based on that, it's middle of February, correct? The other one we discussed for possible grants?
Yes. Also, just so the board's aware, we did have an officer that was reassigned. We have a new SRO officer at the Niagara Reef Field School District, and that is Officer Hall.
Permanently?
For the year, for this school. And then we'll have to abide by the contract guidelines to choose for next year if he, if he elects not to stay there.
Who was there last year?
Officer Rouge.
He's been here?
He was there for the past two years, last year and the year prior.
And he's back on the road?
He's back on the road.
He's a full time?
Yes.
Do you lose Officer Hall now in your regular patrol?
Yes, and he's replaced by Officer Rouge, takes his shift. So they just swapped.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Jackie?
I have two budget revisions to ask the board for approval, please. The first one is requesting to move a total of $1,764 to the other general government support budget from the aid fund contingency. And this is to cover the newly mandated New York State for resident training expenses for all town employees.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Thank you.
The second revision is to move a total of $1,500 to the traffic control contractual budget from the highway administrative contractual budget, and that's to cover the striping of bridges and Dickersonville roads.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Thank you very much.
I just wanted to talk very quickly about our 2020 budget coming up. Through this month of September, all of the department heads are submitting all of their departmental requests. It will be submitted to the town clerk tentative budget by September 30th, and on October 2nd, the town board will be given the tentative budget from the town clerk at a special 4 o'clock meeting that day. On October 17th, we'll have departmental head budget meetings here in Town Hall.
It's 9 to 4:30.
Correct.
Jackie, would you work with both Al and Rob to coordinate department heads where they may not be able to spend the whole day with us? Because they sometimes, particularly if we have one department or board interested in it. And we thank them for working and putting money in the social security for us.
Thank you very much. Bill Conrad, anything? Jeff Ritter, you're, you're on the agenda as well with some sewer, sewer issues, or anything else to do?
We had previously, previously discussed me wanting to turn the typist designation to a clerical one for the treatment plan.
Clerical two.
Clerical two, yeah. The Niagara County Civil Service typist job at the Water Pollution Control Center has evolved into a position with much more responsibility and accountability than the previous years, and it needs to be done at a higher level right now, I think, for the, as long as that position exists.
Jeff, this person is already doing that work?
Without a doubt, yeah.
About a motion, I don't have...
Well, the motion would be to create the clerical two position, well, we already have the clerical two position. It will be a set of pay and to make the promotion, because it's a promotional appointment, and we've made it in the...
So we finished the discussion in executive session, just make sure we're clear on the wage or what's your...
I think we already did, we already did in the executive session. We did, we saw what the issues we discussed, and so, yeah, it would be clerical two at a pay rate of 19, 10 an hour for an annual salary of $39,728.
Detective one.
I believe September 2nd was the, the day, so it's going to be retrograde.
So move.
Okay. With a motion of second, all in favor?
I agree with that, so mid, mid range.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's not the very optimal feeling, you know?
Correct. So with a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Now, the promotion, you want to tell us who you want to promote to that position?
Cheryl Mulisha, she's already taken the civil service test, just because she wanted to get on the other list. I would hate to lose her.
Right, and she's on it, so... Right, and she's on it, so, all right, Tom, are we okay to make the motion to, to fill that position?
Yeah.
Okay.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's Cheryl Mulisha.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Dave Train?
Yes, I'd like, I'm going to pipe to Water Pollution Control Center, from their property, the pulver pipe, and I need an installation fee of eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents waived.
So, well, here's my question, Tom, do we need, it's one department to another department, do we need to actually waive that fee?
The other one was, that was with the state controller, put this in place, that's the reason I presented to the board.
Yeah, you should, you should waive it.
Okay.
Because one is highway, the other is the multi-commissal.
Yeah, okay.
They're going to charge them more.
What's the, what's the amount?
Eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to waive?
No, I mean, it's more or less a shared service arrangement that I worked out with Jack in the first place.
Right.
So whenever I need equipment or need something manpower, they supply that and don't charge me, uh, just because it's an installation fee, it's pretty much stated.
Right.
Okay, make a motion to waive the eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents figure between the highway department and the larger team.
Second.
A motion of second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you. That's it? That's it. Dan Zano?
Nothing.
Mike Dashon?
I just put a sheet with a few different updates on your, on your, the diocese there. Uh, just real quick, we, uh, we got a new Facebook page up, Lewiston, uh, facebook.com/lewistonparkscreations. I'm just going to put all of our parks, projects, and programs on there. Uh, we usually use our website, but people are going to our website less and less, so it'll help us reach more people. Uh, update on fall programs, uh, swimming starts tomorrow at St. Niagara, Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, we'll be going out to December twelfth. Uh, Loopport School District is approved for verification for gym use, straightened extended basketball season. Uh, next town, Borbie, you're going to get a couple, uh, kids to hire, so just be aware of that. Uh, we're still working with Loopport on an open gym night, uh, and we're currently working with the library to try to reinstitute our tutoring program, uh, after-school homework out.